Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Southborough School Committee meeting on Thursday, October 17, 2024. And we have one agenda item on this meeting this evening. So, thank you for coming. We are being recorded this evening, and I'm told we're also live streaming, just for everybody in the audience to be aware. This meeting is to provide the community an opportunity to hear from independent auditors who reviewed the investigation that was conducted at Neary School in the spring of 2024. The school committee voted at our June meeting to hire an outside firm to conduct an audit of the investigation that was performed in the spring. We contracted with Comprehensive Investigations and Consulting, CIC. I will refer to them as CIC going forward, so I don't mess up their name, who performs audits and investigations for municipalities and school districts across Massachusetts. They have not performed any work in the Northborough or Southborough school districts or in either town prior to this engagement. They will provide a detailed overview of the audit findings and follow-up recommendations. At this point, we will conduct our first session of public comment. We are having two public comment sections this evening, and for those of you who are new to public meetings, we do have a public comment policy. It is an opportunity for the public to share their thoughts with the school committee, but it is not for open dialogue. Speakers will be limited to three minutes, and in total, each session will be held to 15 minutes. Topics for discussion shall be limited to those within the school committee's scope of authority. Its authority centers on the review and approval of the district's budget, the performance of the superintendent, and the district's educational goals and policies. Comments and/or complaints regarding school personnel apart from the superintendent or students are prohibited. If a member of the public is speaking outside of the above-mentioned policy, I will gently remind you and ask you to move on to another topic. And for those of you who are currently here, I probably will repeat myself, so I apologize for the second time when we do this again. So if anybody has any public comment, feel free to go to the microphone in either aisle and state your name and address for the record, please. Okay, so there is no public comment. So I'd like to introduce Dan Bennett and John Benzan from CIC, and they put a slide deck together that they're going to walk through. So, thank you, John and Dan, for joining us this evening.
Thank you very much, Chelsea. Am I too far away?
Yeah.
All right, okay. I'm gonna pass this back and forth between John and I. My name's Dan Bennett, and I'm one of the three partners at CIC. With me is John Benzan, also another partner from CIC. We did an investigation, and we'll go through it as we go through the slide deck. CIC is a combination of three different...I'm trying to think of what show that was from.
Perry Mason.
Oh, Perry Mason, okay. CIC is a partnership between three people, myself and John. My background was working with the district attorney's office in Middlesex County, Worcester County, and I also was secretary of public safety for Governor Baker. I've done a few other things in my time. But John, myself, and Carrie Gilpin, who was the former colonel of the state police, got together and built CIC to do investigations from a multi-view and as a teamwork.
Part of my background includes my stint...I was also assistant district attorney, but prior to that, I did serve a stint under the Attorney General and worked in his organized crime and special investigations unit. Currently, I'm a criminal defense lawyer, but I do have plenty of years of prosecutorial experience, where I explained to, earlier on a different day, that I had the pleasure of doing both reactive and proactive investigations.
Currently, we have about 50 municipal clients, or I shouldn't say, 50 municipal clients, four of the state sheriff's departments, and our biggest client is the University of Massachusetts, where we do essentially what we did here, which is go through their procedures and policy as far as Title VI investigations. We were hired by them last year, I'm sorry, it was actually this year, later on, after they had some difficulties up there with arrests and issues. Next slide. We're really limited here to five things, and we take that very seriously. We do what we're hired to do, and the first was to see what type of policies you had. It says Southborough, Northborough, but whenever, if, in certain places, but it's the Southborough Public Schools that we were hired by the school committee, whether or not you had policies and/or procedures, and if you followed the policies or procedures during the issues that came up last year. And then the third part was documenting a timeline, going through everything that was done, and creating a timeline of exactly how and what steps were taken, when. The first, the fourth part was whether or not the investigation was done in a timely fashion, and then the fifth part is, going forward, what can make it more effective? Now, the scope of the investigation, the reason why this slide is up here is, I just didn't want anybody to be confused of areas we were not going into. We weren't going in, there was already investigation done, we weren't hired or brought in to look at that investigation as far as the incident itself. We weren't brought in to review anything to do with special education, and we weren't brought in to review whether the superintendent's or school committee's decisions as far as discipline were concerned were appropriate under the circumstances. We were brought in to look at the policies and whether the policies were followed, and the future of those policies. This was the part one that we were looking at. Now, I sometimes go on, because I'm an attorney too, too long, so I cut John out, and that's a mistake I make. This was step one and step two of the policy, of what should happen if there is discrimination that takes place, and how it is notified, the discrimination itself, if a complaint's brought to the principal or the civil rights coordinator, and the principal should inform the civil rights coordinator. John, am I cutting you off?
Yeah, those are the policies and the procedures that we examined. You did have policies and procedures in place. Later on, we will talk about how we thought we could improve on those, and where any one person or one event faltered, we could explain that later on.
I want to point one thing out about the policies. If you looked across the state and went to most schools, whether they were elementary schools, middle schools, or high schools, any type of public schools, your policies mirror what are the policies in those schools. If we went back to the last three clients that we had, which were schools, and I looked at their policies, as far as these issues are concerned, they would be identical, they would be exactly the same. So, it's, your policies aren't different than the mainstream of what's going on in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. This slide differentiates...I'm sorry, next slide, I apologize. When it's an anonymous complaint, the protections that are there for someone who makes an anonymous complaint, because very often, there's the feeling that if I complain, there'll be some type of retaliation. This shows the protections that there are. It also shows that there's a difference, there's an informal complaint, someone can make a complaint, but that person is informed about what they need to do to make a formal complaint, what that needs to be done to be brought forward. Next slide, please. These are the steps within a formal complaint, and it's written up in a manner so that enough information is going to be provided so that it actually can be evaluated. And in a formal complaint, you need to have the person, the conduct, the date and location of the conduct, and it has to be signed by the complainant. After that, that's when you initiate it, and there is two people that really look at, make an assessment of it, and it's a civil rights coordinator or the principal will make the initial assessment after the formal complaint is brought. Next slide, please. Oh, absolutely, sir.
So with respect to the distinctions in the different type of complaints and the different type of procedures that will follow, it's dependent on what behavior you're addressing, because not every behavior that happens in school warrants a formal complaint or warrants a full-blown investigation. So, part of the things that the people involved, the principal and the civil rights coordinator and the superintendent, they have to delineate exactly what warrants a formal complaint and down the line.
Okay. Now, once that formal complaint's been brought, there's four different areas that they, that can sort of not resolve it, but different paths that can be taken for it. They can look at that and say, well, this just isn't harassment, this isn't discrimination or retaliation, they can dismiss that formal complaint, that's A. B is something that happens, it might not be a complaint that would fit under the civil rights coordinator, but it might be some type of other behavior, which there should be an investigation or there should be some result in an individual, a student, or a teacher, or anybody within the school system, where there should be something else done about the situation. Then C, the third part, is, sometimes the complaint, the best way to resolve it is for, let's say, two students to get together, manage it so that they resolve that complaint, the problem between them, without going forward through an investigation. And then the fourth is, if the alleged conduct is substantiated, and that means if, as a result of the investigation was substantiated, the civil rights coordinator or the principal would initiate that complaint, would initiate that investigation, excuse me. Now, this, I think, and this shows too much time as an attorney, to me, this goes back to James Madison. This is sort of the rights that we have, which are limited within the scope of this position and this policy. It's not all the same rights that you have in a court system at all, but it is the rights that, sort of a due process type of system. The complainant, the person who brought the complaint, gets an opportunity to be heard, to identify the witnesses and any other evidence. Step two, the respondent, and that's the person the complaint is made about, they get an opportunity to be heard and to bring relevant information forward. You have to maintain the privacy, because these are students, these are also employees, this is not a public investigation, this is a private investigation within a school system. And step four, the investigator will keep a written record of the investigation process, and that's so important, because when people go back and try to figure out what was appropriate or what was not appropriate, that written, that written record is so important to maintain.
And that requirement of a written record, it does also apply to the previous screen, where when a complaint is issued, all that, or someone comes in and makes an allegation, that all should be recorded in writing, and there should be provision that tells you how you maintain those records.
Step five is, it's to be completed within 20 days of the date of receipt of the complaint. That's not a hard and fast rule. If an investigation is going to take longer, as long as there's good reason, as long as it may be the complexity of the investigation, or the difficulty of obtaining the witnesses, you can get longer, but that's your date, and you have to show why you need it to be longer than 20 days. And that's, that's sort of a due process right, too, because you don't want this dragging on and on. Within five days after, the notification goes out of what's going to be done about it, what the school's recommendations are, what the remedies are. And then, if, step seven is, if in fact you get the complaint done earlier, there's nothing that says you have to go on for 20 days. If it can be done in 10 days, then you can do it in 10 days. Now, interim measures are very important with regards to the procedures that you have here, because you can't wait, very often in a lot of these situations, for the whole investigation to be done. That could be hazardous for a student, that could be in a position where a student and a teacher have some type of difficulty. The principal or superintendent can put in interim measures during the time you're actually conducting the investigation. The timeframes goes actually right back to what I was talking about, the 20 and 25 days, and what it takes to extend it for a longer period of time. The third thing is the preponderance of evidence standard, and what that really means is 51%. When you're in court and it's, you're trying a criminal case, it's beyond a reasonable doubt, you have to have a moral certainty that it's done. There's also another standard called clear and convincing evidence. That's not what the standard is here in the processes and procedures, it's 51%. Is it more likely than not? Once the results are found, then you, the notifications goes out, and both the complainant and respondent's notified of the results.
One thing with the interim measures, you also want to think about that as protecting both the person making the accusation, the person who has been accused, but it also protects the procedure and the investigation that's going on.
The next standard is the appeal. Either side, the complainant or the respondent can appeal to the superintendent or his designated ee. And what that really is saying is, if come back and the respondent or the complainant is unhappy with the results of what the investigation showed, they have a route of appeal, it's up to the superintendent. Even if the civil rights coordinator or the principal made a different determination, they still have an opportunity to appeal it up to the superintendent. This part is, that's sort of the background, and as I said, if you went to 10 different school systems around the state, you'd probably get that, those rules, from nine out of 10 of them. This is what took place during our audit of this investigation, and once again, remember, we're focusing in on whether those policies and procedures that we just went over, whether they were adhered to in this investigation. Here we have what the policy is, and then we slide over to what ended up happening in this case. The policy says that the, once that report was made, that was a civil rights violation, that, the parent reported, the principal should have notified the civil rights coordinator with regards to the slave auction. That was the first thing that came out, the civil rights coordinator was never informed of that, so that was a flaw in how the policy was implemented in that case. Okay. Okay, this goes to exactly what I was just talking about, the policy states the investigation should be prompted equitably by the civil rights coordinator, principal, or other designated individual. It never got to the civil rights coordinator, so the civil rights coordinator couldn't make that decision. When the civil rights coordinator was informed, that was when a racial slur was used, not when the slave auction was. Once that happened, then the civil rights coordinator took effective and immediate action. And the mistake was, the principal should have informed the civil rights coordinator of the mock slave auction, so that the civil rights coordinator could have taken the same actions that they did when they learned about the racial slur.
So the timelines that we talked about really don't kick in with respect to the civil rights coordinator until he or she is made aware of the complaint, same thing with the superintendent.
Now, when we're talking about this one, we're talking about exactly what John said. The complainant and the respondent have a right to be interviewed, identify witnesses, and provide evidence. That didn't happen in the slave auction, because it didn't get to the civil rights coordinator, but when the racial slur was used, it did get to the civil rights coordinator, and all the policies and procedures that were supposed to take place took place. The relevant parents, the teachers, the principal were all interviewed and given an opportunity to provide evidence. There was a scrupulous written record kept about that information. And the second part was, the privacy of all the parties should be maintained in accordance with state law. The investigation was appropriately done, and the information that was given to the civil rights coordinator was protected from being divulged outside of the people that needed to know. On the left side is the policy we've already talked about, the keeping the written record. That was taken care of, it was completed. It was three days over, 23 days, but that's not unusual, and it was not unreasonable, and with the complexity of the number of people that needed to be spoken to, it was, I'd say, right on target, if not by the date, but by the work that was done. And as soon as it was done, the notification to the investigation, to the family was done, families was done three days later, which is really extraordinary, that they were able to get everything processed in that amount of time. This is what happened with the preponderance of the evidence standard, civil rights coordinator, the slave auction had violated the policy, the non-discrimination policy, A180, and teaching controversial issues, policy I120, that the racial slur, the same thing. And then there was a third event, where a student was singled out, and that created a hostile environment, and that violated A150, and all were by the preponderance of If you look at the evidence, and it was, that's why it was so important, and it was scrupulously taken down, and it was, the written evidence, all those findings were supported under the preponderance of evidence standard. Everything that civil rights coordinator found, you could find in the records, look at, study, and make the same determination. This is just to indicate, sort of, this is a little repetitive, but this is, this is indicate that the, as soon as that was done, the letters were sent out to Parents One and Parents Two, thanking them and informing of the substantiation of the allegations. This is when we looked at the policies and procedures, what took place afterwards. And once again, we weren't looking at whether or not, whether, what the appropriate discipline should have been, we were looking at the policy and procedure and when it was filed. The superintendent had, it was in their purview, what that, what that discipline should be or what the remedy should be, and the superintendent fulfilled his obligation by sending the information out, email, regular and certified mail, alerting the teacher of the intention to dismiss. And that was appropriate action under the policies and procedures, getting that information to the teacher in a timely fashion in that manner. All right. I don't know if anybody would have wanted to see this anyhow, but this is, this, part of our job in the audit was to produce a timeline. If you look at the timeline, you can't produce it without revealing information that's not supposed to be revealed outside of the report that we produced, so we didn't put it in these slides. Timeliness of the response. We look at the standard there, the incidents of discrimination, harassment, the investigation promptly and equitably. The problem here was, the principal responded, but they took the slave auction and they didn't conduct, they didn't notify the civil rights coordinator, and they also didn't conduct an investigation into it. So, that was, the timeliness of the response from the principal wasn't correct under the policies and procedures. Superintendent, once he became aware of what was going on, he quickly responded, and within days, he had met with the involved parties and started that. Once the investigation was started, once it was realized that an investigation after the racial slurs had to start, then the investigation was timely. It was over in 23 days. Okay, this effectiveness of the communication. The important part here is, once the investigation started, and they were, the principal, the superintendent, everybody involved, there was multitude of communication. There was emails sent out, there were meetings with parents, the information was spread, was in the classroom, and then, in the end, the civil rights coordinator sent the correct responses that were appropriate under the circumstances out to the two parents who had brought the complaint to begin with. There was a lot of information, and this is really a difficult slide, I have to say, because it's always a balancing act when you're trying to make it so that you don't reveal any privacy concerns, but you keep people informed. People want to know everything and everything that's going on. There are restrictions that are put on the superintendent or the administration not to reveal information that is student information, that is disciplinary information, and they can't do that. But they did give out the information that they could, and they continuously did that throughout the three weeks that this was going on for. And right away after the racial slur, the superintendent sent out the first email informing the school community about it, and not just the two parents who had made the complaint. John, did you want to say anything about this?
I would just add, echoing back to what Dan said about how your policies mirrored other people's, other, you know, communities' policies, the timeliness and with respect to what happened after the racial slur incident, and how your civil rights coordinator and your superintendent are reacted, the way they, how fast they did it was unlike what we see in other communities, it was way faster and more comprehensive.
Now, the first line of this slide, "It's speedy and thorough with the exception of the principal at points." That's going right back to the issue that came up to begin with, which is the slave auction as compared to the racial slur. The communication was good, once it was brought to the superintendent's attention and the civil rights coordinator's attention. The slave auction, that information didn't get sent out when that, when that took place, therefore, that's why we say, we say "it's speedy and thorough with the exception of the principal at points," and that's the point where the principal did not notify about the slave auction. The administration answered, responsive via emails, they were, email sent to them, they responded with the information that they could produce. I'm not going to reiterate the failure of the principal in this case. Now, some parents were, expressed frustration about- Now, some parents were, expressed frustration about not being informed, and I would say that's to do with the slave auction and that, that amount of time. Certainly reasonable that you would have frustration that you weren't informed about something that would happen in your, your daughter or son's classroom. But after it came to the superintendent's, superintendent's desk, then the email communication was thorough. And the superintendent wasn't aware of the slave auction until, until the racial slur took place. Now, this is, I don't want to be patting the school committee and everybody in the back, but what these folks did, once it came out that a mistake had been made, is really extraordinary. You know, we go around the state, and we go to universities, and they get caught up in not wanting to admit they made a mistake, not wanting to change anything. What's been done here in Southborough Public Schools is really, is really extraordinary. I'm just going to go through all the steps that have been taken. This is before we even made recommendations. This is when we were doing our audit. People were sent out to a four-hour training on investigative procedures. A director was hired to develop a plan. Training school leaders on how to use a discipline model, module, excuse me, was, was done. Now, met with the Sandy Hook Promise liaison to set up. I don't know if any of you have ever heard the people from Sandy Hook speak about it. I'm about to tear up now, just thinking about meetings I had with them when I was Secretary of Public Safety, frankly, but this is really important, that they went out and made this effort, and they're really putting themselves through something, working with the people from Sandy Hook, and, and what went on there, and making sure that that is something that they're going to take care of, the students. Then, a planning with Mass Insight, and that is a good thing, because you're going to have an updated action plan, and then there's, there's going to be a summary of progress that goes on, whether you're, whether you're getting to do that. The next slide, please. This is the follow-up where you, you see what the progress that you've made is. You, you develop that plan and schedule, and you keep on it. The first meeting was scheduled on September 23rd. And this makes sure that the issues that had come up during this are addressed. The failures or mistakes that were made were, are addressed and continue to be addressed. And then the last part is, is bringing us in to look at the policies and procedures, and to provide some recommendations. All those things were done before we completed our investigation. Were either set up, or they were completed. Now, I, this is to, this is a more intensive policies and procedures for the future, that we think will ensure that this will, is less likely to ever happen again, that there's a mistake made, not necessarily that a teacher couldn't make a mistake, or a student couldn't make a mistake, but that the policies and procedures would be inadequate to inform people that, that as a result of that mistake, action has to be taken. And so, these are the recommendations we, we made. This, I think, is an important one. You have to add these terms to the, to your policies, so that no one is going to make a mistake and think, "Well, this isn't really a civil rights issue. This isn't really a Title VI issue. This is an issue that we don't have to react to." And one of those, the big ones up there is hostile environment. Hostile environment can mean a lot of things, but getting a definition down there and following the terms, so that you know that once it's affecting another student's ability to learn within the school system, you can't just go on and leave that behind. You actually have to take affirmative action. I think this is an important issue, too, the top, the statement of responsibilities for the members of the school community. And by that, I mean, if everybody knows what their job is, and what their role is, and what their responsibilities are, if it's laid out for them in a document, it, it's a lot easier for them to understand, rather than just a presentation like this. If they've got a written document in front of them in school every day that they can look at, that they can refer back to, they're more likely to be able to accomplish what they're supposed to be. And that, that really goes with that one. John, did you have something?
So, this would not only be in your, your policy, but it'd also be part of the, the training that happens before every year. The suggestion might also be included that the, the training happens more than once a year. And lastly, and I find this, when I, when we talk to universities about their, how they talk to incoming freshmen about sexual assaults and, and sexual activity on their campus, they have the kids look at a video, but no one could tell you that the kid absorbed anything. They just, the kid marked off that he, he saw the video. So, that's not really teaching the kid how to, you know, what to expect in the next four years. And so, one of the things I, I think schools, schools and towns have to consider is, when you're, you're going over these type of materials in your training, how are you going to ensure that every teacher and administrator understands that these responsibilities apply to them, and how to implement them?
The top one, I really think is, is covered a lot by what you already, what, what's already done. The bottom one, an explanation of a formal versus informal investigation procedures, I think is important. If you go around, and like John said, we go to some very large universities, they'll have very extensive explanations of what to do when it's a sexual harassment case or a sexual assault case under Title IX. But under Title VI, it will be more left to decision-making and not, not a formulaic. Now, if you're a very experienced person who's your civil rights coordinator, they're probably going to make good decisions every time. But the other part of it is, having written formal way that you actually conduct that investigation ensures that it's correctly done. And so, that's what we laid out in the next, the next one. And it lays out each step, one by one, to make sure that the timeline is maintained, and to make sure of each step that's being taken, so that there's no question, "Hey, this is a formal investigation. This is what we're doing. This is the steps we're going to take." And if everybody knows ahead of time that this is the way that the investigation's going to be conducted, I think that that's important, if that's in the policies and procedures, so not only the person conducting the investigation understands, "Hey, this is the guidelines that we're following, and these are the rules we're following," but the whole school system understands that. Next, next slide. And this, this is a summary of what I just talked about. And if you take these, all these steps, it is going to be a complete investigation at the end. This is when we look through and say, "Hey, has someone done a complete investigation? Have they done all these things?" After that initial complaint, did they do a summary of the interviews, a summary of the evidence? When they're writing their report, did they come out and get all the policies and procedures that were there? Were there findings? Disciplinary recommendations? That, that depends on the school system and how your disciplinary recommendations. It may not be in the same person that's doing all the other things. And then attaching the records of the interviews. That's actually, when we do an investigation, this is essentially what we, what we're producing at the end of the investigation. And this is just what happens at the end. And once again, it says, "NSPS, we realize we were hired by Southborough," but that was, that was left in there, because we think that for it to be effective, it probably has to be, probably has to be school system-wide. The appeal procedures, once again, laying out what can be done, how you can appeal it, because everybody's, is, has a right to do due process. And then the protections at the bottom, the selection of how the files are maintained, and what is confidentiality. Next slide. This goes back to something I was talking about before, the importance of it not just being in the hands of the person doing the investigation. If every person has a copy of how you're doing this, it will make it easier for them to understand, this is what's taking place. It's not a secret about how you're conducting the investigation. They'll, they'll know that, "Oh, they're, they're doing interviews now. They're looking at evidence now. They're writing a report now. This is the type of thing that's going to be in the report." If everybody has gotten the opportunity to see these ahead of time, and it's in the, it's, it's in your policies and procedures, it, it eases the communication, and it makes it clear that it's not something that's being hidden from the public, from the parents who are particularly, you know, you, you want to know what's going on with your students, your children, and this way, this, this will make it feel a lot more transparent. And then, the training every year on these procedures. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Dan and John, for the presentation. I'll open it up to a school committee for any comments or questions for Dan and John. Anybody want to start?
Put the slide back up that talks about the items. And by the way, thank you very much for the report, Dan and John. Thank you very much for the report.
You're welcome.
The slide that talks about what they were not tasked to, up at the top. Okay. So, there's a lot of discussion about policy. It's good to hear that our policy is similar to the other policies you looked at. When, in implementing some of the recommendations that you have for a policy, where would that, where would that put us, you know, in, in comparing, you know, as to the other school systems that you've seen? Which, that means we'd end up with stronger policies than you looked at outside of our school district?
If you made those changes, it would be drastically improved compared to everybody else. Because, one, it would achieve, hopefully, lessening the likelihood of something like this happening again. Mainly because the gap that we found from the January incident to the April incident, that time period, the superintendent and the civil rights coordinator, they were left in, in the dark. So, with, with better policies, you know, where the principal is already taught and told, and has, in, in writing, that that type of incident has to go up the ladder, then it's going to be an improved, an improved situation. Then, then April doesn't happen. You know? So, now, instead of talking about two incidents, you know, you're only talking about one.
Well, I want to stay with that for a second. So, the, the one...
And hold on, if I could interrupt you. I, I'm not sure, because I didn't see that as a compliment, that yours is like everybody else's. Because a lot of this stuff is written once, that someone says, "Oh, we need a, we need a policy." And they, they, people do a lot of great work trying to put together a policy. But really good policy takes in, it's like when you're learning how to do any type of cooking, you know? You're adding, you're subtracting, and, and it takes experience. So, you sometimes have to go through these type of, of incidents to come up with a really good policy. Because you now understand, like, oh, what was written, what was good for all those other communities, really wasn't sufficient, but it was a really good starting point. So, you, you, you know, and after you make these corrections, then later on, other things will happen, because society changes, and there'll be different ways, you know, one person will hurt another person, and your policy will have to change to address that. But I don't know if that answers your question.
Partially. And by the way, I didn't see that as a compliment either, the fact that we were like everybody else. That's not necessarily any, ever a compliment, but it sounds like that we can be better by instituting, you know, a number of the recommendations you have regarding policy into our policies. So, maybe at that point, you, we, there would be a compliment about our, about our policies, but not necessarily today. So, the one, if you will, I'm going to say, a failure in procedure, is that a fair way to put it? Was the lack of promptness in reporting the first incident to the civil rights coordinator, and that, that, that was a, I don't know what you, you call it a failure in, to inherit a policy, or, 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 or there was just a bad decision practice-wise? How did, how did you view that, again?
That it was a failure in, to follow policy, that it, once that came up, it was a civil rights violation, and it should have been brought up, the principal should have notified the civil rights coordinator, so that the civil rights coordinator could have taken action.
Much sooner than actually occurred.
Yes, it didn't, it didn't occur.
Didn't occur until the next...
Next incident.
Incident. So, will the, and I haven't been able to digest all of the recommendations that you've, you know, that you've made to policy. Will the recommendations that you've, you've made, if we're, if we implement them, would that potentially eliminate, well, eliminate that from happening in the future? Or, there's still always possibilities that people do what they do, or...
Well, it'll eliminate the, the possibility that someone in that position can assume that she can handle it with just...
Okay.
With the way she did. Because the policy will be written, if you get this complaint, it has to go to this person and that person. And then, then the decision on how that's, how it's handled will, will be determined. So, that's the part that's missing, and that's the part that fixing the policy hopefully will, will address.
So, there won't be a question about what to do? Which, which...
Right.
Okay. Thank you for that. And... So, you mentioned, I don't know, what do we call it? We call it the action plan, I think. And yes, it is true that, that we were, that the action plan was in place before, you know, you got involved, which I, which I think we thought was a good thing, to get, to get something moving. But I want, I want people to understand that this is true, that we, what we did ask you to do was, even though we were in process, to actually review that plan, to, to even make recommendations midstream, if you will, even though we'd, we'd already been, we'd been moving along that road, I guess I'll say. So, were you, and you were happy with what you saw, as far as, as far as that, that plan and your review of it?
I was excited. I was excited that you were taking affirmative action like this, that there had been a mistake that was made, and that people were not just saying, "Let's just, you know, let's..." that was made, and that people were not just saying, let's just, you know, let's just let this thing die. Let's take affirmative action, let's bring more people in, let's have more training. That, you know, generally what, if we're in a situation like this, we're making recommendations to do exactly what you were already doing in those situations.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Anybody want to go next?
I don't think I'll need the deck for this, but, again, thank you for the summary and the explanation, I think the way that you provided, it was really helpful, and a lot of people can understand it. I had a difficult time just kind of having to, like, believe that I'm sitting here and we're listening and talking through and using the word slave auction, like, more times than we can count, that this had to, that occurred in our school district. But then, I just had to get over myself, because, you know, it was worse for the children, the eight, nine, 10, 11-year-olds. So, I still feel very sorry and apologetic to those families and those children that had to go through this, and are still kind of dealing with the after effect. So, that being said, I still have some questions that may, I may feel like I know the answer, but I think maybe others, it will be helpful for them. So, you noted that the, for the notification piece in the deck, that the disciplinary action that was communicated to the teacher was appropriate? Is that correct? Or, I think that's the, it was in line with what the-
The way, the manner in which it was communicated to the teacher, that was correct.
Okay.
That's what should take place. The information should come in, the investigation should be done, there should be a determination of whatever measure.
Okay.
But we weren't looking and saying, oh, it's appropriate that the teacher get A, B, or C. That wasn't, that wasn't our role here. It was, oh, they did the investigation in a timely fashion, they backed up their findings with written facts that they had in there, and then the superintendent made a decision and transmitted that information to the teacher. That's what we were commenting.
Okay. And using the means of email, mail, and certified and all of that? Okay. So, I think you might have answered my next question, which was, I was gonna, I was wondering, so then did you find it startling that no communication was made to the principal? But, you're saying you weren't really, you can't really respond on that, it's just about the method, email, the mail, et cetera?
Correct.
And then, there was a piece about part of the, one of the steps was making sure that there was a good written record, right? That the civil rights coordinator would oversee, would be the person that leads. If there is an objection to that, or a question about it, does someone, what is the means to address that? Because, yeah.
Objecting to keeping the-
No, just that-
Everything documented?
Not that they keep it documented, but if you, if a person, I don't know who it could be, but says, "I think you missed something in your written documentation," or, I want to-
Then make a record of that.
Mm-hmm.
You know? So, in the investigations that we do, we endeavor to talk to everybody, but not everybody wants to talk to us. So, we'll document, like, oh, you know, I called this person in Cambridge seven times, and these are the dates I called, I left messages, or I in fact talked to this person, and they still refuse to call, talk to us.
Okay.
And so, you make, that's part of the, that's part of the investigation, that's part of the process.
Let me go a little bit differently with that. There's a piece that says you have, like, seven days to respond or object to something, right? How do we apply that to the situation where, you know, someone says, hey, I don't think the civil rights coordinator caught this part, and the person wants to call or email and say, and share that information? Do they also have only, like, a seven-day window, or a 15-day, is there some window? Or at any point of time, can you communicate to the administration, hey, I think there was something missed here?
I think you can always communicate to the administration that something was missed.
Mm-hmm.
That doesn't, that's not really part of the seven days to appeal-
Appeal, that's the word I was looking for.
Yeah, what's taking place. That refers to the decision, and if it's, it would be the respondent or the complainant which would be appealing the decision under those circumstances.
Okay.
And they would have access to the information-
Okay.
-that was making that decision. Does that make sense?
It does.
Okay.
So, in practice, so, for someone outside, not doing the investigation, to think that something's being missed, then that's, that person should come forward and say, oh, you know what, you're doing this investigation, you haven't talked to, you know, Ronald McDonald, who might have the answer you're looking for.
Okay.
So, you should come forward.
I'm going to pass it to any of my other colleagues, and if I have more questions,
This might be slightly outside the purview, but I think you brought up the fact of, you know, you can have the best policy or training, but like, following or ensuring that everybody is ingesting and understanding that policy and maintains a good understanding of it after the initial training or reading of the policy, is harder to guarantee, right? So, I just wonder if either of you have thoughts on, you know, best practices in terms of ensuring that the policy is, one, well-communicated and understood, but then also is, you know, if I get trained on this in September, how do I ensure if something happens in April, that is top of mind?
There's a way you can set up, there's a way you can set up the software, so, just as when you're working for the state government, not only do you have to read it, you have to be able to answer the question correctly. So, you know, here's the information, here's the different options you have, A, B, and C. You should report it to the civil rights coordinator, you should not report it to the civil rights coordinator, it's up to you. You'd have to fill that out correctly when you do it. I think that's the best way to ensure that someone's actually reading it and then answering questions about it. You can set it up that way. I don't know that that guarantees they're still going to remember in April, but I think it's more likely than if you just read something and go on if you actually have to answer a question about it. John?
I would agree.
I was going to, I was going to say something, like, just how you would teach your kid to tie his or her shoes, you would teach them and talk to them about it, right? And then that may be, watch them do it, and that would be the question and answer part of any type of training or a practice area of how you would have, you know, play action, that's what some training involves. But you would definitely talk to, and either the superintendent would talk to the principal or the civil rights coordinator about their functions and understanding there, and that would happen throughout the year. And people in those positions hopefully understand that that's their role, like, that's, it's not, it's not, well, I did mention it usually happens in, before the school season starts. That's just the formal, the informal education part of this, it happens, like, oh, at lunch, or on the way home, or while they're just watching the soccer game. So, all of that can be impressed upon your colleague, so everyone's on the same page. And that's the real important part, you want to get everybody on the same page.
Yeah, I just had one quick question. So, one of the slides mentioned, one recommendation that you both had was the inclusion of a couple of terms, to just add specificity to some of the policies. Just so that I can understand and have a bit more clarity, was that specific to these particular policies at play, like, in this particular scenario? And also, if you had any recommendations on, you know, how to include those to, you know, avoid subjectivity, and just ensuring that people are all on the same page on how to interpret, you know, policies so that there's no confusion, there's no, you know, this particular term could mean one thing or something else, so, just any clarity you could provide.
Yeah, well, the reason those terms, well, part of the reasons those terms were taken was a policy I've seen from another school. But, another reason is, when we look at, in particular universities, and also some public schools, OER, which is the federal organization which oversees and comes in and makes evaluations, those are the terms that come up over and over again, of where a school made a mistake and was not, you know, not living up to what it was supposed to be doing. And, so, when I look at that, and OER says, oh, these are the, these are the important terms, this is where the school system dropped off or failed, then I think that those are important terms to be defined.
Thank you so much. And again, just thank you both. I found this extremely comprehensive, and it was really easy to follow, so, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just have a few things to add. When we initially contracted with CIC to do this work, the school committee tried to stay within the bounds of the purview of the school committee, so that's really why the items that Roger referred to in the fourth slide were excluded from this. Outside of this audit, there was a separate special education audit that was performed and presented to the school committee at our September meeting, so that is available on the district website. And I just wanted to clarify that the Say Something, Sandy Hook Promise, is an expansion of what we already have, so we're looking to roll that out to some of the younger grades and parents and guardians across the district. Greg worked extremely hard over the summer to get our action plan to the point where it is tonight, and he will continue to give the school committee quarterly updates on all of those action items. We also put together an FAQ document that we voted at our August meeting over the summer, which was a comprehensive list of questions that we received from the office hours that we held in June. And that's also posted on the district website for anybody to take a look at, and we're always open to feedback. We have not received a lot of feedback for changes on those FAQs or the action plan, but we are available via email, and we also have had two sessions of office hours since, right before school started on August 22nd, and also, we had one last week on October 8th, and we had nobody attend. So, we will be planning on having an office hour session next Thursday evening at 7:30, and we'll have a November and a December, so look for those, we're trying to push those out through Parent Square, but if anybody has a better idea for advertising, those were all. I just want to speak to the policies, just so that everybody understands, that we actually do not generate the policies at the individual committee level, because we're a district of the Algonquin Regional High School and Northborough K-8. We have a subcommittee of those three school committees who work collaboratively together on district policies. All of the folks to, Roger's left, our central office staff who service all three districts, and it is a lot cleaner and easier to have all of our policies be consistent, so that we're not having different actions that can be taken in different towns. So, that's why we have a subcommittee that reviews the policies. Kamali and Laura are our subcommittee liaisons, and they are, I know, will be working really hard this school year to make some of the changes that we saw tonight. We also have a subcommittee for operational budget, and I think one of the things we need to take away from this is being able to support any decisions that are made for the, especially for A180 or any replacement of A180, to make sure that we have funds available, if needed, to do outside investigations on a whim. I think that's an important thing that we need to dedicate funds to, so I think we should think about that and bringing that back. I'm just trying to see if there's anything else I wrote down here. And any tools for measuring? Yes, I agree. Measuring, yes, training. And I think another important point that you brought up, Dan, was around making sure that our policies are distributed to families too, so that they know what to expect, and I think doing that on a yearly basis is important, because if it, if it doesn't happen to you, you don't, you don't know until you're going through, and I think it's, it can be really hard to navigate what to expect if it's, if it's not presented to you before. So, I think that's a good, a great takeaway, that we didn't actually, I didn't have on my, my list of items to do.
You could do that with a handbook, a physical handbook, and then put a link onto your website.
Okay, great. Great. Also, the slides from this evening are available via Public Records Request, which is available on the district website, if anybody wants to receive those via electronically, we're more than happy to send those to you. Does anybody on the school committee have anything else to add? Greg, do you have anything to add?
So, thank you again, Dan and John, this was, this was great, it was great to work with you. I appreciate all the time and effort that you put in.
Okay, so with that, so I apologize for those who were here for my opening, but we're going to move on to our, I can't go close to Roger. Oh, it's, okay. Sorry, I thought it was your fault, okay. So, we're going to move on to our second public comment of the evening. For those of you who are new to public meetings, we do have a public comment policy. It is an opportunity for the public to share their thoughts with the school committee, but is not open for dialogue. Speakers will be limited to three minutes, and in total, each session will be held to 15 minutes. Topics for discussion shall be limited to those within the school committee's scope of authority. Its authority centers on the review and approval of the district's budget, the performance of the superintendent, and the district's educational goals and policies. Comments and/or complaints regarding school personnel apart from the superintendent or students are prohibited. If a member of the public is speaking outside of the above-mentioned policy, I'll gently remind you and ask you to move on to another topic. And if anybody has a public comment, feel free to go to the mic, state your name and address, please, for the record. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Nikki Pinkney, I'm from 21 Strawberry Hill Road. Thank you for the presentation. I have a couple of questions and thoughts for all the parties in the group. So, realizing that this was out of scope for CIC, I'd like to know more about, what is the appropriate action and discipline for the principal, not complying with their responsibility to conduct an investigation and to notify the civil rights coordinator after the, after the mock slave auction? And regardless of written policies, shouldn't the principal have known, as a tenured leader, that a racially-oriented complaint, whether formal or informal, should have been escalated immediately? We should not need to annotate every branch of the tree of possibilities in order to trust that our principal is going to make the right choices to protect our students in every single situation. So, I'm aware of a 10-day paid leave during which I've been told-
So, Nikki, unfortunately, that's outside the bounds of school committee.
Okay.
So, we do not get involved in discipline, so, I'm going to ask you if you can move on to the next topic, please.
Sure. I guess then my question is clarity on if the, if the scope is how the superintendent is performing their responsibilities, how do we evaluate whether that decision was appropriate?
Okay. Thank you.
Andrea Hamilton, 119 Northborough Road. So, I appreciate the presentation. There's a couple parts of the timeline I'm surprised didn't come up as part of the investig, or the audit. So, I think we all now understand that the January piece was amiss, the auction should have been reported. The slur that then happened in April and became, Mr. Martino became aware at that point of the actions that had happened. I know we start talking about the emails that went out on May 2nd. I think what's important, though, that hasn't been brought up, is that prior to those, on May 1st, there were a series of individual phone calls that went out to every member of the classroom between the principal and the teacher, and in those phone calls, parents were- calls, parents were not informed of the scope of the auction, and they were told that the slur was used because it was read directly from the book, um, and, and that was a lie. Uh, it was not in the book, the teacher said it spontaneously on her own. Um, and, and that happened before the emails started going on, and also happened before the investigation was begun. I think it's important to note that, at the point when the slur was known by the superintendent, no investigation was triggered. Um, and I know this because my daughter was in the class, and I was part of a series of meetings between, uh, the superintendent and Ms. Richards, who ran the investigation, um, after the fact, um, and one of the questions that kept coming up from parents was why it took so long to begin an investigation, and we were told that it's because neither of the first two incidents, um, rose to the severity of requiring an investigation, and that it was only at the point when there was retaliation against a student, um, that an investigation was required, and it sounds like that, that's not correct from, from the process here. Um, I'd, I'd also just like to bring up that I heard the gentleman on the end mention how he likes to speak to everyone and get all the facts when he's doing his investigations. On August 10th, at the beginning of the audit, I sent an email to Ms. Malinowski at her district email, copying the entire school committee email, um, and asked if parents who were from the classroom would have an opportunity to be interviewed as part of the audit process, um, and I never got a response from the school committee. Um, so, I know I wasn't interviewed, and I don't know any parents from that class who were, so I just, I don't know where all the information here is coming from, because again, it feels like there were a couple big misses. Um, so, again, I just, I'm struggling a little with faith and confidence, um, of this body's ability to have oversight for itself. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I'm gonna read from my phone, because I'm a little fired up, I wanted to thank-
Sorry, can you name an address?
Oh, sorry, Jill Dixon, 1 Kenley Lane. Um, so, I wanna thank the school committee for being amazing and fully immersing yourselves in these incidents, I am grateful for your leadership and for starting this investigation. I wanna thank CIC for your efforts and thorough investigation and easy-to-understand presentation, notwithstanding what Andrea just said, 'cause I wasn't aware of that, um, so I hope there were parents involved. Um, it, I definitely think this falls, while I'm going to reference the principal, I definitely think this falls under the superintendent's responsibilities, and therefore the school committee. Um, from the report, the principal should've notified the civil rights coordinator, and didn't, should've fired, should've notified their boss and their superintendent, and didn't. And that principal is sitting in this audience, and has, to the best of my knowledge, been paid for the past five and a half months after not following a policy? The slave auction and the racial slur are the incidents that led us here? They are absolutely disgusting and unacceptable, and I said this in June, and I will say it again. I cannot believe that these children and families have to continue to be exposed to triggers, such as the person who didn't follow the policy and didn't notify the civil rights officer, still being here, day in and day out, literally, in this room. I'm struggling with all of it, I'm struggling with the fact that the appropriate steps were not followed after such traumatic events occurred for these children and their families, and I'm gonna say it again, it is unacceptable and disgusting. So, now what? Where's the accountability for not following this policy? We aren't talking about not following the policy of where we put library books. A teacher in our school had a slave auction, which was not reported properly, a slave auction, and since it wasn't reported appropriately, the children and families were traumatized again, weeks later, with a racial slur, in school. Had the first incident been handled properly, the following incidents could've been avoided. So, I'm going to ask the question again, now what?
Thank you. Okay, last call for public comment. All right, thank you, everyone, for coming this evening, um, is there a motion to adjourn?
Second?
Laura seconded, all in favor? Bye-bye. Thank you.